This is the City Council meeting of August 17, 2015. If you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You called on the floor.
Councilmember Althak?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Haal?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Hodges?
Here. The agenda's next item on the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
On second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? Item three is approval of our minutes of the previous meeting of August 3rd. Again, any additions or corrections there?
I move for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 3rd. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? And item four is approval of the accounts payable. Any questions or concerns?
I just have one question about some work boots purchased for employees. Is that something we've done in the past or I never noticed that before? Was that something special?
We have done that in the past and that was also part of the agreement that we approved of that.
Okay. That's so why I haven't seen it.
We approve up to $100.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. That's kind of what I thought, but I don't want to ensure that that was correct. I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Althak?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Item five, citizen comments for any items that are not on the agenda. So if any citizen would like to address the City Council, this would be the time to do so.
Hello. I just have a brief comment. I would like to thank Mayor Hodges and the City of Lowell for welcoming the Elkhorn Retreat. The concert that they presented at the Shoahole Riverwalk was on July 25th. And all the comments I've received from citizens of Lowell and other people that have attended have been positive. So once again, thank you very much to the mayor and the City of Lowell for hosting this event.
Actually, great deal of thanks goes to Sue for organizing and putting it all together and then she didn't show up. She had to be out of the country with her sister. But anyway, it was a great deal of fun. Thank you. Anyone else here to address the council? Saying no, then we'll move on to item six, old business. Mr. Haal, give us an update.
Certainly, just one thing. Downtown Trail Connector, I recently attended a meeting with that LARA, Lowell Area Recreation Afforee, put together with M.D. Department of Transportation and Department of Natural Resources to discuss the plan that they've been working on for Lowell Connector. They wanted to get some feedback from the state agencies on that plan and invited me to attend since. And I'm hoping the city would be a fine point of reference related to that Trail Connector. So, very nice job. Questions were answered. LARA's doing a great job at it. And I think coming up, one of the next things, their plan handling is having a joint meeting with our Parks Commission to start to get the, sort of, the city folks involved in the planning process and aware of the connection that's being discussed and kind of up to speed on that. So, great job by LARA in all their meeting together. And I thank them for allowing me to attend as well. That's it on strategic goals. I have nothing further. And any council projects?
All right. Thank you. Moving on then to item seven, our new business. And there's a resolution proclaiming Friday, September 11 as Pink Arrow Friday.
This is a resolution that we do every year. This is the eighth straight year that Lowell high school sports teams will initiate the cancer awareness and fundraising event called Pink Arrow Friday. It will be held on Friday, September 11. And LARA's wore pink jerseys and the game's being held that day. And then funds are being raised by the purchase of a T-shirt. There's last year's, this year's T-shirts will be on sale soon. And it, funds are being raised by the Childless Club for Lowell and community wellness. So, what we're being asked to do is for the council to look at our resolutions supporting that event and naming that Pink Arrow Friday in the city of Lowell.
Very good. Comments, questions, concerns?
I would like to know that we approve Resolution 12-15. As a cancer survivor, I think I can do that.
And you should.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to proclaim Friday, September 11 as Pink Arrow Friday as a resolution. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Althak?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. And just as a reminder to the council, we'll have a next meeting for a pink T-shirt at Pink Arrow Friday week. And we can help celebrate that Tuesday, September 8th. Thank you. Moving on then to item B, a resolution proclaiming Friday, September 18 as Prisoner of War MIA Missing in Action Day.
And again, this is something that we do every year. The Michael J. Boss, Chapter 18 of Vietnam Veterans of America, they observe Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day on Friday, September 18, 2015. A brief ceremony is held at the Chantilly Michigan Home for Veterans in Grand Rapids. Typically, the mayor attends and takes a copy of the resolution that we adopted and presents that. And again, that's Friday, September 18. If you offer the resolution, we will have something to take with you after that.
If anybody would like to join me, that would be fine. Any work presumptuous here because we haven't passed the resolution yet?
Don't want to get too far ahead of you.
Any comments or concerns? Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution 13-15.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution proclaiming September 18 as Prisoner of War MIA Day. As a resolution, roll call, please.
Councilmember Althak?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you. I'm very proud to represent our community and be there on September 18 at 2:00 p.m. If anybody would like to join me, let me know. Item C, cell tower moratorium resolution.
As you're aware, the Planning Commission is in the process of reviewing changes to the zoning ordinance relating to cell towers or wireless communication towers. In fact, we had gone through some effort. They held a public hearing. That was coming to you for consideration. And sort of in between that time, the staff, we felt that maybe there were some unanswered policy questions that needed to be dealt with. And so, we asked that you pass on that and allow the Planning Commission to go through a process of making sure that those questions were answered. And they did that at their meeting a week ago. Andy Warford, Williams &amp; Works has some homework to be working on, some potential revisions. In the meantime, we're in a situation where the tower downtown will be removed hopefully this month yet. And when that happens, that kind of opens the door for cell towers to be located in the city and potentially be located in areas where we may not want them located based on revisions in the ordinance. And so, we've discussed that at staff level and a discussion with the city attorney about perhaps we could create a moratorium for a six-month period. I don't think it'll take that long, but for a six-month period, which seems to be reasonable to give the Planning Commission the opportunity to complete their revisions. And then, once that's completed, we could move them to moratorium and then cell towers could be allowed within the areas that the Planning Commission feels is appropriate.
Questions or concerns or comments?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, as we all know, it's easier to pull one up than it is to take one down. So I think we want to be very careful. And I think this is a good recommendation that we take our time and plan for one that just hasn't popped up forever. So, I would go ahead and make a motion that we adopt Resolution 14-15.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution for cell tower moratorium. All in favor of the resolution? All right. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Althak?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on then to the library deck project.
I'll get started on this and then John Sterling with Lowell Rowery is here to answer your questions. And I don't know if John, if you have anything to present or not. But just to give you some background, a deck on the northwest corner of the library was included in our stage showboat plan that was completed, I said more than a year, but it's been probably a year, a little less. I've passed out for tonight's meeting an executive summary of that plan and also have given you a graphic with, again, the old technology and the new technology. The old technology, the graphic, and then the new technology of the process. The old technology of the highlighter, the Sharpie, showing you the proposed location. And the new technology, the graphic, those designs come into work. But we had gone through a process of bringing together a stage showboat master plan. And that included input from a number of community members and stakeholders. And several plans, several options were discussed and it was narrowed to a single plan, which is what I handed off to you. It included a deck feature that would overlook a water fountain or a splash pad that would be to the north. We were approached by Rowery first to construct the reading garden that's included in the plan. But then, after further review of the reading garden, there are several infrastructure, parking lot moving, things like that, that will need to be completed before the reading garden could be completed. And so, then started taking a look at the deck. And so, a committee was formed to look at the deck and start to plan for the construction of that. During that committee meeting, or those committee meetings, it was proposed to move the deck from where it was originally planned at the corner to around the front. And that's what I highlighted for you in the Sharpie. What I failed to mention in my notes that I'll mention right now is I think one of the primary reasons for that is because in the corner is where two roofs come together and there's quite a valley and there's quite a bit of water that dumps into that corner. And so, we would, if we were going to place the deck in that corner, then we would have to make some modifications to try to bring that water or do something. A lot of water comes in that corner. The, there were some challenges also in putting the deck around the front. The committee wanted the deck to be as large as possible, but not encroach on a 10-foot strip of grass that's needed for the Riverwalk Festival to be able to put tents and stuff along the Riverwalk. A plan was formulated. It was brought to the city's Parks Recreation Committee to review whether or not there was support to move the deck from the planned location to the front. The Parks and Rec Commission concurrantly recommended that the City Council support the project. In the meantime, I requested that the committee review the altered plans with landscape architect because the deck is a piece of larger picture. And you've got a splash pad, you've got actually a concrete walk would move if you can kind of see where, sort of see in light where the old walk is. Seating area would be different. The stage, obviously, is a new feature. And so, it's one component of a larger plan. So I asked the landscape architect to review it with the committee. She made some recommendations for some modifications. The committee accepted some of those, rejected some of those. And now they're ready to come to you and ask whether or not we're in support of the project. And so, I think that's where we stand at this point. And John, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but I think that's where we are. We need some discussion with the council.
And Rowery has met with, I think the Chamber of Commerce was, and I think Fatsy's been involved with that too. Because a lot of this involves a chamber also. Go ahead. Any questions or concerns?
This is just the cost of construction. And so, from that point on, the city would accept responsibility for maintenance and repairs and anything else as part of the building. Is that correct? Or is that part of the Parks and Rec budget? Part of the building budget?
It's not part of the budget right now. And so, with any new amenity, you would have to start to plan for what's the cost of maintenance, what's the long-term cost of, you know, potential repairs, you know, those kinds of things. So you have to start to plan for that. The other thing that should be mentioned is that you, I mean, you have this cost estimate that was originally supplied to us and forwarded to the Rowery. I think the Rowery's going to be able to do this for much less than that. But I don't know if I'm speaking in a turn there, but I think they're going to be able to do it for much less than that. But that was at least some of the initial stuff that was given to us that we were to include in the package and bidet and do all those kinds of things.
Mr. Ellison, in response to your questions or concern, the material that's on this deck is going to be composite, which is what I want to say. It's not wood that has to be stained, blah, blah, blah. So it doesn't have to have any general maintenance. There would be one section of railing that would be on the ramp because it has to be handicap accessible. And that would be either material like what you have on the Shoahole now, the railing that's on there, which is black. I propose white because there's white trim on the building. That's up for discussion, whatever. But the only part that that would be of any kind of maintenance would be the grounds around it, which already is. I've spoken in detail with Dan DeYoung from the city employee. He's the one that does the grass and the stuff there. And Rowery is willing to, you know, build the deck, all the materials included. What they would not do is do the sidewalk and any kind of shrubbery and whatever, you know, decoration you want done. But it's going to be pretty much close to the ground. It would be probably 18 inches off the ground. And there'll be monumental steps on two sides, which would be the north side and the south side. And the only part that would be exposed would be on the west. And the reason, for the reasons that Mr. Haal just explained, was that the chamber's trying to use the sidewalk for tent space. So we kind of left that open. But a couple of our committee members have questioned that, you know, is that really sacred? It's only used a couple of days of the year. But there's the opportunity of putting steps on the third side too. Now, when I say a monumental step, each one of these is roughly 2 to 14 feet wide. So it's so you could sit on them, you could put chairs on them. So we're talking a two-sided deck. You know, the third side would be up against the building, not attached to the library. So if you wanted to remove it or do something with it, you wouldn't do any damage to the integrity of the building itself. There was discussion about leaving a three-foot space between the deck and the library itself. But our committee felt that that was a health issue. Somebody could fall there. And they wanted to plant some shrubbery around it to kind of decorate it up. And we were kind of against that too. The whole idea is to keep it simple and plain. The structure itself would be treated wood on piers down in the ground. There's quite a few pokes that have to be. So there's a lot of structure that's underneath this deck, but it's not something that's, you know, three foot off the ground. There is a style that we could do that I didn't bring to the committee, but we could build it almost at ground level, pretty much only have, you know, eight or 10 inches one step. It is a possibility if that's a concern. But if you get too close to the ground, now you're going to start getting bikes, they're going to start jumping up and doing skateboards and that kind of stuff. So, you know, that ramp is going to be temptation for that kind of stuff. But as far as answering your question about the cost, it's pretty much maintenance-free. So additional expense would not be. I took a best guess, and this is just off the top of my head that's losing here, is that it would probably be in the neighborhood of $10,000. Rowery's willing to do that. I, as a builder and as a Rowterian, would take the leadership role to do this project. We were hoping to have our plans finished by springtime, brought to City Council early summer, and do this thing after Labor Day, after school starts. But we've been set back here a little bit, so it probably wouldn't happen until next spring. And it's all volunteer basis. And I would get to many, get as many Rowterians together as possible. And if I can't pull enough of them together with a hands-on experience, I go outside of our parameters and pick up, you know, volunteers. I know other construction workers and guys that have worked nights and weekends to pull this off. And it's not something that has to be done in one weekend. It's quite intricate. The decking material itself is gray. And I'm proposing that we do 20-foot wide, which is the width of the windows, so it would look nice on the exterior of the building. And they would be two 10-foot sections and they would be picture framed. So I'm just not slapping plastic boards here. I'm going to do it nice looking. The estimates on this, I saw in the packet, was $45,000, excuse me, once upon a time. Then I know that Pat Corneales gave a price of between 65 and 68, something like that. So we're willing to pick that up. The only expense to the city would be to have an architect draw this and put their stamp on it. It would be the concrete sidewalk and any kind of landscape you want to do to it, but that could be really cut to a minimum. It could just be grass up, you know, the next to this, it could be moldy. There's a couple of trees there that don't affect our deck. I forgot what the purpose was. Somebody donated them in memory of somebody. And, you know, we're not messing with those. There's some sprinkling there that we may have to move the controls a little bit. But other than that, there'd be some electrical work. But I think I can twist some arms of electrician to do that so we can have some plugins there for those people that walk the Riverwalk and they want to plug in their cell phones or laptops or whatever. So we're looking at, you know, adding some features like that too. Did I answer your question? I know I rattled on too long.
No, that's wonderful. Explains a lot and your thought process. It seems like you've considered a lot of different angles and a lot of different.
We, as a committee, have put a lot, a lot of thought into this. So, I mean, we've met six times as a group and then have done a couple informal things too. So we've probably met 10 to 12 times total. So we've been pretty thorough and tried to include, include, you know, as many people from the city as I could, you know, between the Arts Council, the museum, the Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, library board, whatever. So, all right. Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I think there'd be a downside on this whole thing, so. Unless you just don't like it. I, I hope that we support the proposed library deck project.
Initiating.
Been moved and seconded to support this proposed library deck as presented to us. Let's, we'll open another roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Althak?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Haal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Moving on then to item eight, monthly reports provided to us in the packet for the month of July. Any questions or concerns regarding the departments and what we've done? Okay, saying done, we'll go on to item nine, council comments. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Fire authorities met last week. We are looking at purchasing some new equipment, software to install to, to the trucks for, to help in reporting and recording information about incidences and fires and structures. And I like, get a fire, you know, you know who's around you. Say there's a nitro blaster in plant next to you, you know it's there, it's already in the software, you know before you even get there. There's no surprises. That's coming, that's a really good, good investment for us. We are going to purchase the air packs, the 71,000 that is needed. We decided that each municipal will front 20, or ask if each one can front 20. And the fire authority will pick up the last 11,000 of that. So be not totally split between each municipal. Our authority will pick up a little. Our next meeting is the 14th of September, 3/3, February.
Pretty well. Anything else? Then being over now. All right. Mr. Althak?
The fire, or not the fire, the airport board, not last week. And we're, they're preparing to have a fly-in this year, first time in quite a few years. And I'll apologize, I think it is around the 20th.
Sunday of Fallsburg Festival.
Yeah, the festival is, it's the same weekend. So they're going to have a pancake practice and hopefully we'll have good weather. And none of the other boards met, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Haal?
Well, the city manager basically covered everything that I was going to talk about. He did. That's excellent. We, at the Planning Commission, we did discuss the cell tower ordinance, so that's covered. And then at LARA, other than general bookkeeping and housekeeping issues, we talked about LARA people meeting with the Parks Commission to get that rolling and get underway. So, we're clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Ellison?
And thank you, Senator Andrew.
I was tealing yours. The committee that I was on that met was the Arbor Board. We had quite a discussion about, there were certain trees in the right of way. Some citizens were unhappy with trees and we were deciding when, when we don't decide to take down a tree, if it's healthy or not healthy, if it's a safety hazard, if someone just doesn't like it. So there was a bit of a discussion about that. And, you know, I think it'll be an on-case basis, but at that point, there was one tree in particular that we decided really wasn't a danger. So that was the discussion that we had. We're waiting for the next round of funding to see what kind of funds we have available to do some fall plannings. But we're planning to do some, a few things, but we're kind of waiting for some more funding. So, that's all I had on Arbor Board. The other commissions I have not had any meetings with. So, that's all my comments for the evening.
Okay. Welcome back to the room.
Yeah.
I'm talking about that.
Thank you. Lowell Light and Power did meet last week and they had quite a discussion about their hosting the annual Michigan Municipal Electric Association meeting. It's a conference coming up on October 7, 8, and 9. I passed out to the council members an agenda for their day of October 8. And if there's anything that you would like to attend, those sessions being held on that day and/or dinner, let Greg Pierce know and he'll be happy to work us into that. And they also invited us as maybe out there in the future to, if we would be interested in any of the conferences with, that they attend concerning public power. Those are held all over the place and they have initiated a invitation to City Council members to sit in on those, those meetings wherever they may be held. Valerie Braider's visitation to Lowell. She's the chairperson of the Governor's Advanced Force on Energy. She visited Lowell Rubbery Club and made a very lovely presentation. I mentioned that before, but that came up in the manager's report with Lowell Light and Power. The biodigester continues to improve its processes. Greg Northrup was there to discuss some of the pickups and issues that they're proceeding with. They're taking some ownership and leadership with it and addressing those issues and making sure that the biodigester works well. It's not so much the smell issues as it is producing the electricity that we were hoping to do. They've got a good plan on how to make some tweaks and corrections in the design and move forward with that. Work continues on the Rolls-Royce turbines and there's a solar turbine. Now, that's a solar, not anything from the sun, that's the name of it. Anyway, it works off of natural gas, but it has run several times in the last few weeks during these warm periods of time. And the Lowell Light and Power received a wonderful resolution from the City Department. And the Lowell Light and Power received a wonderful resolution from the city of Portland for helping out during their tornado earlier in the summer, as well as recognition for working with Traverse City during recent storms up north. So they continue to step up and be involved in mutual aid issues with other communities within our state. So that's off to Lowell Light and Power on all of those. The Chamber of Commerce met last week also, and the big item there is that they were discussing the showboat and taking some leadership on some of the repair work. And that needs to be done, as well as working with other groups and committees and looking at what the whole future might be. Part of that with the first plan that we saw earlier from Pat Cornell, saying the next step of what we might do with Riverfront. So the Chamber of Commerce is taking the leadership on the showboat repair and restoration work and whatever the future may be there. And Girls' Night Out is October 15, and it will be a pirate theme. And there was some rumblings about buried treasure, so we'll see what all that means. I'm sure they'll be in touch with you about that. And that pretty much wraps it up. The WUP committee will meet in November, so. Other than, oh, I had a great time. I really did. Went to the Alphorns. And if I could adlib one more time about it, I didn't think it would be possible to have a concert with those things for two whole hours. And what could be done anyway? It was very interesting, and it was a great deal of fun. Again, thank you, Sue, for putting all that together, coordinating everyone. Oh, good. They're coming back. That's everything I've got. We'll move on to our next item to attend. Mr. Howe, the manager's report.
Thank you. Several things to report. You there, I've written a report and then a couple of adlibs. First of all, we removed the concrete block garage building that is, was, the proposed parking area. You had the old moose building that came up at your last meeting. I appeared to be a little dismissive about it. I guess I didn't mean to appear that way. But it really, a lot of things we've been talking about and knew that it could be completed on a fairly quick basis. In fact, following that, we had a meeting with the DDA on Thursday because we were working on the actual parking plans that had those completed to bring to the DDA, which you're going to see at some point in time here as well. But we were ready to go to the DDA to ask for approval of the funding for the actual parking, and we were geared up to be ready to go to implement the parking lot. Again, we're talking about behind the old moose building, as well as the utility work that needs to occur there. One of the things that we wanted to do, though, once we knew we had the funding lined up, was to have a discussion with the business owners in that area because it was going to be and will be quite a disruption to those business owners. We're talking about roughly 30 days of construction then. So through the course of the discussion with the business owners, which would have been a week after your meeting, a week ago today and Monday, they concluded that they would prefer that we perhaps remove the building and put in some temporary parking, which the DDA also approved funding for, to be able to put down maybe some asphalt millings or something, just to get that lot cleaned up. The kind of joke, kind of half-serious question was asked of me on Monday, that could we have moved the building? We remove tomorrow. And I said, we can have it moved as we can, you know, as soon as we can get it scheduled with DPW. We've got to coordinate with those construction workers over there and all of that. Really, to Ron's credit and to the guys at the DPW, to their credit, they meet every morning and they talk about what's going on that morning, what's going on that week. And as they started to look at schedules, they decided that, gosh, Tuesday morning was really the best time to do it. So they got it, they got on it. They got it done. Got it done within a day. There's still some cleanup work that needs to be done, little things here and there. But really did a great job of getting that taken care of, so thank you to Ron. Thank you to all the employees at the DPW for just jumping on that and giving it done. Going backwards, Friday before then, one of the issues was we had decided, or actually offered about three years ago, the Boy Scouts had a need to store some trailers and some additional equipment at the hand. We had just purchased that property, and so I had said to the Boy Scouts, you know, we've got a building there. It's just sitting there. We're not going to use it for anything. If you want to use it to store some equipment and some trailers, feel free to do that. We'll charge you rent. Just, you know, keep it there to take care of our building. But there will be a point in time where we turn this into parking, and we'll have to take the building down. And so they've had the opportunity to store their equipment there for three years. And we got to a point where as we needed to take the building down, they needed to make some preparations. They called in on Monday and said they'd had their equipment removed that weekend. He said, you know, we've got to get some trailers out there. We need to locate a couple of trucks. I actually offered to use my truck. They needed an extra truck to haul a trailer. And they said they had me on their speed dial. They needed to meet you up. They didn't. But thanks again to the Boy Scouts, too, for being able to jump on that and get that taken care of. So we've alleviated that concern, I hope. The building is down. We're moving forward with the temporary parking per our discussion with the business owners. And we've been looking. We have spring construction in the first phase of the parking lot. As I kind of alluded to before, there's a lot of utility work that needs to go on there. We've got a two-inch water line that's not moved. It's just a stub. And we need to loop that line and increase it. We're going to increase it to six inch to have enough flow for fire suppression in that part of the buildings. We need to increase the sanitary sewer as well. We've got a restaurant now that will be, I'm talking again, in the sanitary sewer system. So we want to make sure we're there in the pipe there and people can handle that. So we're going to have great, great improvements coming to that area with a great restaurant that's going to be open. And everybody's moving forward in a positive way, and that's one of the things that's great about the Lowell, is that we put our minds to it. We get things done. The other thing about the restaurant is still scheduled to open this fall. They're moving toward a September 1 open date, and we're looking forward to that happening. And I think that's all I have on that project. I have some others that slipped in mind, but I'll come back to it. Yeah, can you answer any questions that you have there? That seems to be moving forward very well. We are considering adding a fourth street sweeping to the schedule this year. You may recall, a couple of years ago, we were running four sweepings. We went back to three. And as we've been kind of watching it over the last couple of years, there's just, you know, not only the street debris, but there's washouts that come from private property that tend to get into the color system. There's organic debris. We really need to encourage residents to maybe not mold their lawn clippings into the yard because that eventually covers up the drains. And there really are a lot of issues there. But I talked to the DPW director and the street supervisor, and I just said, will a fourth sweeping make that much of a difference? And got a pre-resounding, yeah, it would. And so I said, okay, give me the number on that. Let's figure out what it's going to cost, and we'll figure out how to work in the budget. I think we're going to be able to do that. And I just wanted to let you know that we're planning on doing that. If you have any objection, let me know. It'll take some modifications later in the year, but I think we're going to be fine. I think we'll do that extra sweeping at about $9,000.
When would that be?
Because we do one in the fall, early fall.
They would schedule, Ron jumped in here, but next week or...
I talked with them last week, and they said they potentially schedule it for next week.
So it'd be very soon.
Very soon.
Thank you.
And then we still would have two more off this year. Why do I want to look? What we said, one more off this year. Last week, it was reported that Tuesday was a record date for Kent County Youth Fair. Youth Fair seems to be doing very, very well. We had some concerns about parking in Parkland downtown, and it was an interesting thing because we had met with business owners on the other side of the river, like on the post office and all that. And we took down the two-hour parking signs because we wanted to open that up based on the discussion with the business owners. But then we had everybody from the fair parking in there. And so we were scrambling around to try to figure out, what do we do with this and how do we handle this? I think we did the best that we could on that, and thanks, Steve and Ron, for your work that you did on that. But we may have to have another discussion of how we try to keep some spots open there for, so for the business owners. And maybe not want that fair parking jam up the downtown too much. But fair is a good thing. I mean, it's a week, it's a week-long event here in the city, and it doesn't bring a lot of people to town. And so you've got those little things that they have to deal with. I think maybe even one of the bigger ones was parking in front of the post office. I think people were having a hard time getting in and out of the post office just because those parking spots were a lot of them. So we need to think about that, I think. Maybe talk with the business owners in that area again about what a short-term plan could be. Councilmember Althaus, if you're in, put that would be very helpful to us. And maybe have a kind of short-term plan for next year and how we might deal with it. That'd be helpful.
Yeah. I, as a business owner, I didn't think it was that bad. I mean, and like everyone says, it's one week, and they're gone. So, I mean, it's not like they shut anybody down. Somebody just had to walk a little bit farther to get their man. Yeah, so. But they had to walk a little farther to get a hammer or two, so. But, no, I think, I think it was a real good idea to open up all them extra parking spots because it helped. I mean, there was cars parked down, almost all the way down my street, so. I mean, it wasn't just downtown. It was every place.
It was every place. It was all the way down the street, most of it.
Yeah, so. Which is, which is good for one week. They do, they do buy pizzas. They do buy ice. They buy lots of stuff from every store, so.
So that's the report on the fair. Just a reminder, we're planning a council workshop for Monday, August 24. It's going to be a fairly hefty agenda. I don't know if we'll get through everything, but there will be a lot of things on the agenda. If you go back to your strategic goals report, I mentioned a lot of things that need to be discussed in the future workshop. I'll probably take all of those and put them on the agenda, and it'll just become a sort of revolving channel as far as we can. Couple of other things. Lowell can be any funding grants are coming up. Our plan for grants will be trees. We'll be submitting something for the historic district. We have a live skin project that we plan on submitting for. And then it sounds like I need to submit maybe for some additional expenses relating to a deck, so I may be submitting for that. And then that's all I had for grants. If there was anything else that you can think of that we might have been on the schedule. That was all I had so far with this round of grants. And then last, but certainly not least, we have in the audience Heather Wood Gramsa. And Heather, if you want to come to the podium, you're welcome to do that. Heather is the new executive director for the Inglehart branch of the Kent District Library. I was honored to be a part of the interview team. There were three candidates that they had narrowed it down to, but they interviewed three very strong candidates, and Heather rose to the top. And just excited to have Heather here. Looking forward to working with you. Looking forward to you being part of the community. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. I've been here for three weeks now, and I have to say that this community has been most welcoming to me. And I can tell Lowell loves its library, and so it's very exciting to be here. And I look forward to many years of serving right alongside all of you and serving this community. Thank you.
And other than that, any questions for me? That's it. For our board?
Thank you. Item 11 is appointments, and all of our board's equations are full, so.
I moved that we adjourn at 7:44.
I will say.
I've moved and seconded to adjourn. All a favor.
Yes.
Thank you.